All right, let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order. Let's please stand for a prayer with Mr. Slepli.
A young man of 92 named Thich Nhat Hanh, who was a Buddhist monk in Vietnam and then spent the rest of his days as a monk in France, says that people say that walking on water is a miracle. But to me, walking peacefully on the earth is the real miracle. Let us pray. As we turn to the tasks before us this day, fill us gracious Lord in making faithful choices, great and small. Guide us gracious Lord. As we seek to notice and serve those affected by our choices, teach us gracious Lord. As we offer our lives to you, hear us with our hearts ready to serve. Generous giver, you pour forth your extravagant bounty without measure upon your whole creation. Teach us such generosity that the fruits of our spirits and the works of our hands may build your commonwealth of blessing. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Dana Bosh.
Here.
Mr. Avery.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Slepli.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Love.
All right, moving on to communications. Can I get a motion to receive and file communications?
I made move that we receive and file communications.
Support.
Motion support, any questions or concerns on it? Yes, Lisa.
The map, you got one error on the parking map. I'll just pass mine down to you. It's the parking lot that's at Riviera. Half of that belongs to the city, half belongs to the Riviera. It's odd because of a street end.
Any other questions or concerns on communications?
Are we going to review this large packet of stuff beforehand? Or this is just for us to review until it comes up again?
The ordinances are actually going to be a planning commission next Monday for public hearing and review. Eventually, they will come to City Commission. I just wanted to give everyone a heads-up opportunity to have a little bit more time to review the ordinances.
Do you want to provide any feedback at any time?
Okay.
Well, in line with that discussion right there, it might be wise for us to say some things because this is a chance where the public will see through duty of TV here. Because I think there are some spots in there that we need to review. I know we're not voting on anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
My name is Kenneth Nickel. My address is 13645 Fisher Road. I live in Yale, Michigan. Tonight, I'm coming to introduce myself as a candidate for the 81st District State Representative on the Republican ticket. My purpose tonight is twofold, is to introduce myself, put a name with a face, and then also to reach out to this body to see what your priorities are. And I will do that in the coming days to make certain that I follow through with that. I want to give you just a little bit of background. So I've been a St. Clair County resident for nearly 26 years. I live in Lynn Township, and if I pull up my map, it's way up here. And my wife and I have been there for 25 years. We first built a house, and then consequently, years later, we built a home. Raised three children there, and we're very proud of that. I'm, in my real life, I'm an educator. I've been in the educational field for a little over 33 years. I currently serve the Yale Public School District in the capacity as Superintendent of the district. It's probably the, one of the two best jobs I ever had. The first one was a busboy when I was at the Chamberton Restaurant in Dearborn, and the second one being serving the public in a capacity as superintendent. Because I look at both of them very similarly. It's a service organization. We're here to service our family, our kids, and our community. I think one of the components that make me a pretty viable candidate is the, my experience. I'm currently, have the opportunity, just like you, to work with a great council, a great board, and I operate an $18 million budget, and while also putting a fantastic product out to the community. I'm not a politician, and by any stretch of the imagination, if anybody knows me, they certainly would agree with that. I feel that the similarity of me in the public eye has been something that I've been very proud to do for the last 33 years. I've been at Yale for about 19 years. I've built the car, so to speak, on the assembly line. I've been a teacher, I've been a coach, I've been an assistant principal, I've been a principal, and currently, as I said, Superintendent. It's hard to believe, and I say this with great pride, I'm the longest-seated Superintendent currently in St. Clair County. And as my wife tells me, stop telling people that. That just says you're old. And this is my eighth year in that capacity. My job gives me really good perspective. It gives me perspective because I have the opportunity to work with about 11 townships, villages, and municipalities within my district. We cover 156 square miles. We are one of the largest school districts, geographically speaking, in St. Clair County. So I feel that I've had a good opportunity to use my skill set and work and reach out with our communities. I think probably if I had to pinpoint one component of why I've been successful, at least I believe that we are, is I'm willing to listen, and I've tried to approach things in a collaborative spirit and try to work with our, with our communities in that capacity. I'm very active in our community. I belong to Sacred Heart Catholic Church. I'm a Knights of Columbus member. I'm a third degree. I'm very proud of that, and that kind of defines who I am. I could give you a little rhetoric tonight, and I probably won't do that, but I'll just kind of hit a little synopsis, so to speak, of kind of who I am and what I believe in. A lot of folks talk about infrastructure, and you guys know that all too well, what you have to do in building your roads and your buildings and things like that. But infrastructure is also, people that are like in the back here, your support, your police, your fire, your EMTs. And I think a lot of people neglect the idea that people are infrastructure, and you have to continue to invest in that. Without a doubt, I'm an avid outdoorsman, so consequently, I'm a big proponent of the Second Amendment. Where I live, in God's country, I live on 80 acres, I'm a gentleman farmer, and as I said this before, some people would question both. And because they would question whether I'm a gentleman or if I'm a successful farmer. I'll let you know at the end of this year, I'm currently doing soybeans, so we'll see how that goes. I just turned it over from a hayfield, so we'll see if we have good success. Typically, a year after, you don't. So we'll see. I'm a firm believer in local control. I think you guys are, have been identified by the public here to represent them, and I truly believe that you are the voice of the people, and in such, you should be able to tell others what is best for your community because of your constituents. It shouldn't be government that tells you. You guys should be leading the path and determining what's best for your community. So I'm a firm believer in local control. And then, as I said before, I'm not a politician in any stretch of the imagination. So I don't come to people with promises or anything beyond that, other than I will work very hard to make St. Clair County a great place to continue to raise a family. So thank you very much for affording me this opportunity tonight.
Moving on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Support.
Any corrections, deletions? Hearing none. Mr. Avery?
Well, I am a bit confused with our business of filing the communications. I understand that we voted to file it, but I was hoping we were going to discuss the parking ordinance amendment while we had a chance, and suddenly, it was gone. So that's...
You could request it come up next meeting if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
Why not?
Why not? It's just that we're here now, and we have a chance. All right. Thank you.
Well, during the communications is when you...
I brought it up during the communications.
Any other questions or concerns on the approval of the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Need approval of the City Commission regular meeting minutes, May 17, 2018. Mr. Avery.
I'll make a motion to approve the... City Commission regular meeting minutes from May 17.
Support.
Any corrections or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Moving on to unfinished business. We need to abort appointment for the SEMCOG alternate, alternate. Anyone want to volunteer? What day do they meet normally? It's a day, isn't it?
It varies. They have two big meetings a year, and I'm the actual, this is the alternate. I haven't missed one, so it's probably not going to come up, you know, barring the unforeseen. But everybody's welcome to go to these meetings, and they're great. I mean, I learned more about drainage than I ever wanted to know before because they had somebody in there that, you know, that was able to communicate all that. They're very, very informative. I highly recommend them. The last one was down here at McComb Community College, and one before that was over at Cranbrook Institute. They're always in an interesting place, and you get to see interesting people, and...
And the next one coming up is at Little Caesars Arena. It includes a tour prior to the meeting.
There you go.
Anyone interested?
I think it's kind of attached to Wendy's seat.
I knew that was going to come up.
Being the newest one on the block.
Kind of good with that, too.
It's a, like a zero commitment, but...
All right. If we don't have any volunteers at this time, we'll just move on then. Infrastructure committee recommendations.
I guess I'll start off with this, and we have quite a few people that were on the committee that are here for any other further questions. We met several times reviewing the information that the DPW director had put together regarding the road resurfacing and road projects that involve underground infrastructure, sewer and water improvements. The group took a look at the fund balances that we have, the future revenues, the estimated costs for projects, and they put together two recommendations. Both involved doing a headly override ballot proposal for, one of the options is approximately two mils that would be enough over five years to be able to cover the projects that were just the road resurfacing. The other option is to do a headly override for the full amount to go from, I think we're at about 16.3 or something, up to the full 20 mils, which would give enough to cover all of those road resurfacing projects and start on some of the other road projects that involve the infrastructure underneath. What we will be looking for this evening is direction from the Commission to work with the attorney and financial agent to start preparing millage language for the ballot, and that also would include the amounts. So it would be an analysis of our taxable value and looking at the estimates of the projects. The one for approximately two mils would, in essence, pave all of these roads over the course of five years. And in that course, there are a couple of bonds that we have that will be paid off and coming off of the tax bill. That would, I think, change the burden to the taxpayers, and five years would be an opportunity to reevaluate and determine how we move forward with the larger, more expensive road and infrastructure projects. The five years, one thing to take into consideration with that is that initially, you would see a little bit of a bump in the taxes, but then, over the next two to three years with the bond payments, that will come down. So that's something to take into consideration when you make your decision. And as I said, Bill Clausen was the board representative on the infrastructure committee. We've also got Joe Moran here. I don't know if there's anyone else from our committees. Mike Ittrich is also part of the committee. So if you had any questions for anyone else, we're here.
Yeah, we worked on this several times, sitting back and forth. And this millage is just for the roads. It's a one-time deal. If it's not done, it's going to keep going on and on, like a millage you would do with the schools and stuff. But this would be a five-year standalone. And then, when the five years is up, the millage is gone unless you want to renew it or there's something else to do. But it's a standalone just for the streets.
Mr. Avery.
I know that any time that our DPW manager has talked about this, where he's also always been very careful to point out that we don't want to pave over a problem that we know is down in our water and sewer structure. And I'm not seeing anything in here, so what are we doing to make sure that we're getting that work done before we do a nice pavement process?
I went through and picked out roughly 28 streets that we do not have problems with. So those are the streets we're going to concentrate on first. Before, we do like Woodworth, Holland, Pleasant, Maple, those streets like that that need a total infrastructure redone. These other streets, I'm pretty confident that we can do. Maybe we might have one or two breaks on them afterwards. I can't guarantee you that, but these streets we can do and should last quite a while before we can get to them in 10 years, 15 years, and take care of the major problem once first.
Mike, is that based on the Saw Grant study or age of the system?
Yes. The sanitary part of it's based on the Saw Grant study. The other part is based on how many water main breaks and condition of mains I've had in that, on those streets.
And probably the year this system was put in.
Exactly. You know, that's, and that's that part of it. So that's where, that, I believe the second one, am I correct, isn't we splitting the second one up between infrastructure and road?
The second option would start doing some of those projects that do have the underlying issues.
Right. So the second option...
So getting that, getting that full headly roll up, so it's going to be a little bit more than three mils, is going to give us a little more money to work on some of those other projects.
So essentially, you're not, you're not trying to take on more streets. You're trying to take care of more of the problem with the larger bonding.
Yes, yes, yes. This way, we can save on the one half of, because it's going to be dedicated money. So it's going to be actually saved over for five years, correct? We don't want to go longer than five years because if we have something major happening at the water plant, sewer plant, or something, we need to get money in there, we could then do something for that. But I think the way we put it out, Joe, was to save the money in the five years to start the infrastructure after the roads are paved.
Yeah, the, two things to keep in mind. One, either way we go, what we actually wind up doing is going to depend on the actual conditions of the roads at the time. Bids have to be submitted by usually November of the prior year. So at that time, the committee will get together again with Mike, and we'll review what we had planned for the following year, what it looks like we may need to do in lieu of, and, you know, whatever emergencies we might have had that have impacted the available funds. The second thing to keep in mind is the first option, both options were brought about with a whole lot of hard work, going back over it, going back over it, and we feel pretty confident that this is the best approach to both solving the problem in a timely fashion. And, you know, we have to bite the bullet. If we don't do it now, it's going to cost us more down the road. The first option just takes care of the surface streets that we're going to mill and cap. There is no infrastructure in that option at all. The second option allows us to start doing some small infrastructure projects, but maybe one or two of the less expensive streets. At the end of that five-year period, we will have the surface streets that just require the surface only completed, but the large problem with the infrastructure remains. And we will be looking in all probability at the end of that five-year period to getting additional funding to start working on that large, larger project. So those are the things you have to look at before you. And again, if you have any further questions, fire away.
Do you think at the end of the five years, we have to renew the millage?
Unless someone comes along and drops 20-some-odd million dollars on the city, which Bob, you're more than happy to do.
Just one million.
Well, we could go with that, actually. You know, come up with a better idea.
Oh, that's true.
That's, that's pretty much, yeah.
That's what we'd be looking at.
Yeah, and we're pretty much looking at that kind of moving along down the, down the road.
Mr. Avery.
I just wanted to make sure that we understand that one is capping road only, and the other one is still basically roads, because we were only talking about road repair. And while looking at this, I want people to understand that at the end of five years, we don't solve all the problems. We solve the immediate problems. We still have to plan for sewer issues and the work underneath. I know you can't plan every one, and a degree of what it can be, but...
I've got one question for the City Manager. Do you have an idea on the number of mils that will be getting retired in the next, was it, we have, in the next three years, isn't it? There's three of them being...
I think about three.
About three.
I think so. I'd have to verify that with Arianna. I believe that, like, next year, we'll be retiring about $60,000 a year, which is a little, little shy of a mil. I think our mil's usually about $90,000 a year. And then, the year after that, I think the next one's about $130,000 a year. So somewhere between the two and three mil mark, probably like 20, 22 or 21, something like that.
Well, we carefully went through all of this, and I thought there for a while, we were meeting every day. But we're trying to listen to the residents, and the biggest complaint is the roads and get them fixed. And I think by a millage, and if that it's tagged for the roads only, it's nothing else than, or we can look at the second one and look at a longer period of time. But I think that's what the residents want, is get some of these roads that are really bad that we looked at first capped and done.
Yeah, I recommend everybody read these two items on here, and then there's an attached chart that will tell you, like, in the first, first one for the two mils, you've got your equivalent tax increase per $100,000 value of, what, $127.78 to $127 dollars per $100,000 value of your house. That would be your increase on the first proposal. The second proposal for $100,000 value is 255 for the three mil, correct?
Correct.
And you'd still have your ready-to-serve fees to work on other issues and to try to work to save that for future issues or to use it if you need it for emergency cases if we have another failure.
Yes.
Because we've had too many already.
Yeah, we'll be keeping some money in reserve for both the local and major streets as well.
Yeah.
Because we need to have some money on hand to be able to handle emergencies.
Yes, and this gives the public an opportunity that you, you can vote. You can vote on whether you want, you're sick of the roads, like we all are, or not. I mean, I don't, I'm not one for raising taxes, but in this case, I know when I first bought my house here, it's when they first paved the roads, and I know I bought a corner and I had to pay off that, they, they charge per, your front footage.
The landing of your feet.
Yeah, so you had to pay that off, and, you know, I don't even think, according to you, it wasn't even up to a vote, right? The city just instituted that one. So we're at least trying to offer everybody an option. And if we're going to drop, if you can find out for sure if we're going to drop three mils in the next three years, I almost think you're, I hate to say it, but you're almost better off to go for the, the second of the two to try to get it done. And, you know, I know it's going to be painful for all of us, but if not, we're just looking for bigger heartache if we have major meltdowns.
Joe, could you, could you explain the third chart here a little bit? I don't, do you have a copy?
I could explain that. That was something that we were requested to, in essence, put together numbers of what it would take to do everything. So 10 and 20 million over a 20- and 40-year loan. So those are the numbers for that. That's not something that's feasible because we have some limitations based upon the millage and our debt load, so it's not really even an option, but it just at least gives people an idea of what the potential cost would be for everything.
So this is another option to consider at this point, but it's not feasible really.
Correct.
It can't be done.
More questions. So if you're going to do ballot language, I mean, either we can decide, or could you put both on there and let the public decide which one they want to do? Or is that not a good idea?
You can't have, you can't have an election to decide what your election is already.
Well, I just checked...
So we would have to have ballot language, I think, by August. Would that be correct?
August 14, that is.
Okay.
So that means you would want to have that in advance. I think you'd have to pick the ballot.
Well, potentially, what we could do is at the next meeting, have numbers for both of those put together. I mean, it's going to potentially cost more for...
Yeah.
...financial actuary to put together those numbers, but then we could have the ballot language so you truly see those exact numbers.
Okay.
And you could, we could have the drop-offs...
Yes.
...at that point, too.
So it'd show them, minimize the...
That's important.
...the cost, too.
Well, which almost isn't a law.
Yes.
I don't want to use that word.
Right.
It creates a...
Some balance.
Right. You cannot, that, that, that concept would not be in your ballot language.
Right, absolutely.
But it could be, that could be the word that people get, is that these will be dropping
off.
It's something we could show to educate the public on how it actually works.
You can do a fact sheet. You just can't really take up position.
Yeah, we talked about loans, but they didn't. When we balanced everything out, the loans were out because of our debt cap, which is by the state. So that was kind of out, but we, so we were basically looking at the millage at that point and how long to do it.
Mr. Avery.
I think something that I was pleased to hear in Mr. Moran's... I think something that I was pleased to hear in Mr. Moran's explanation there was that this was conservatively done to provide a cushion for an emergency after the five years. And then, so, it is well worth looking at that and seeing that probably Plan Two is the way to go, but it doesn't solve all our problems, but it keeps us in a safe situation.
It's a start.
So, I guess at this point, it kind of sounds like you want us to move forward with preparing financial and language for both options and bring it back to the next meeting for a decision at that point. And keep in mind if, so I wouldn't really need a motion or anything at this point, but keep in mind that if for some reason we don't make a decision at the next meeting, it doesn't mean that it's dead, we can't go forward with it. It just means that timing-wise, we probably would not be able to have it on the November ballot. And I think the next election after that would be in May, probably, and potentially that would be something we would have to pay for the election if it's the only thing on the ballot.
Given the fact that we don't have a July 5 meeting either, so it would have to be decided.
And you have an August deadline into the county.
Correct. That was correct, but we can get that prepared.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen. So, we'll prepare ballot language for both, right?
Would you change the order just to say that we would do this?
In time to be able to vote on it so that we can get it on the ballot for this fall? I mean...
If you took action on it at the next meeting, we would make it.
That's what I mean. It just, we should plan to do that, because I know there's been a lot of work that went into this, and we would like to take advantage of it and make sure that our planning can be done to make, to get us into good contractual situations.
We will have that.
There's lots of time to do it.
All right, then, we're going to move on to new business, Blue Pike Cantina, request for outdoor cafe service.
Do you have a plan?
I understand, but can you explain it? Just a brief synopsis of it.
Basically, what we want to do is be able to serve wine, beer outside on the city sidewalk in accordance to the state lira laws and to the new cafe ordinance that's hopefully going to be approved here shortly. That's it, you know? We're going to block it off per lira, you know, with the clearly defined marking and probably put, I don't know, maybe four to six tables out there, probably take them in and out every night. Up to the eight feet, there's 14 feet of sidewalk there, so we're going to use eight feet of the sidewalk.
And still protection.
This sidewalk can handle it.
But you designed this on the new, on the proposed ordinance that we're looking at that we've seen.
Yes, combination of the ordinance and with the outdoor service area permit per lira. And that's what you should have there.
So, I attended both the meetings with the planning commission. The second one, weight trim was there. They were, I don't know, I don't recall if you were there or not, but they gave very detailed explanation of this. We asked a lot of questions about it. What was determined was, really, it doesn't have to go through the planning commission for approval. It's pretty much what he's done, present the site plan, present the information to our code ordinance officer, and this administration approval. So, I think at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request.
I have a question.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support.
Motion, support, so.
I went down there and I measured the sidewalk at 13.8 to the back of the curb, okay? And I'm reading the ordinance that says you also have to have adequate space at the curb for a corridor for vehicles. How is that figured into the five-foot here that you got here for a sidewalk?
I don't know that, I don't know. I'm assuming that the five-foot is the five-foot. I don't, I don't know. I guess you'd have to look at the ordinance.
So, then you're taking about half, half the sidewalk, right? Better than half the sidewalk getting beat.
Yeah.
Well, what's the number for door clearance?
We talked, we talked about that at the planning commission.
We talked about it at the planning commission, they never gave a figure. They said adequate, and that's what it says in the ordinance.
And that's all it says in the ordinance.
But what is adequate?
I don't know.
To me, if you're putting the door entrance, opening the door into your required five-foot sidewalk, that's not adequate.
Are we talking a Colorado, our Cadillac Eldorado, or are we talking a Mini Cooper? You know, what door clearance do you need?
I'm just saying, we, the five-foot was based on ADA compliance. So, now you're going to block ADA compliance with the door. So, where are you, where are you vying on that?
Well, then, let's give a definitive number on what that has to be. Mr. Pollak's trying to comply.
All I'm asking is for the number that is adequate for the doors. I was at the planning commission, and I know they discussed it, but I didn't realize when I tele-read this that...
So, your fence for Laura is a temporary portable fence, right? If it was somehow determined later on, you needed to move one foot closer to your building, it wouldn't be a problem.
That's, that's feasible, yeah. Okay. If it's a foot, if it's five feet plus three feet for a door, then there's probably no point in even adding the ordinance. Because I think we got the widest sidewalk down on the county.
You've got 14 feet.
Yeah.
You do have a wide sidewalk down there, because the other ones are 12 when you look down the other way. I'm just trying to figure out the problem that somebody's coming down in a wheelchair and somebody opens the door into that space that's supposed to be for them.
Right, but we, at the planning commission, we talked about...
I know it here, it says we're not liable, you, who are going to hold you responsible for it or everything, but it's just a question.
No, how did, how did the weight trim determine the five feet? I don't know.
Now, if the...
What's an ordinance?
If there was a change in the ordinance, how it's written, approval today would be only, you know, because we can't see in the future what it's actually going to be. It may be adjusted slightly, you know, the ordinance may be adjusted slightly, you know, how it's written. If you're... You could amend the motion if it was acceptable to say, we grant this subject to you complying with any additional requirements that arise out of the ordinance when it passes.
Right. I mean, there's four to six weeks for a lira to approve it anyway.
Yeah, that would probably be the...
I'm in that kind of business with what I do in my job, and I have to look at the worst in that, and that's what I'm asking.
So, does this stay out all night?
I don't think so. I mean, according to the ordinance, I think it can, but it probably won't. It might leave tables and chairs out, but the barrier's probably going to come back again.
Any other questions?
Is that suggested language okay for the motion maker?
Yeah.
And the second?
Yep.
Did you reiterate that, please?
Just see that, I think he moved approval with the idea that there would be, there would be, there would be compliance with any changes that might occur in the future ordinance approval, if there are any.
Well, I'd be willing to amend my motion. Again, I stated the fact that we don't know what the door swing clearance dimension is, right?
And I think that that's probably something that merits more conversation leading into the approval.
Right now, the ordinance states five feet of clearance.
Right.
Right? But then, if there's a city trash can in the way, does that get factored into this? Or a city tree in the way, does that get factored into this? I don't know. It's not clear. But I ask the question, is he flexible to where he could adjust his fence line? And he is, so.
So, maybe the new, when the ordinance passes, it'll address that.
I mean, if it's another five feet, four feet, then that's going to, then it doesn't make, pretty much put everybody out of it. There's no, there's really no sense having it then.
Yeah.
Especially on the other hand.
Okay, so we may, we've adjusted the...
Motion, a couple of feet is okay.
Mr. Avery.
Yes, I was just going to say, the five feet is a reasonable thing to provide constant clearance. There'll be short periods of time that somebody could open a door. There'll be even shorter periods of time that somebody in a wheelchair is going to go by. You have to use some common sense that the car and the wheelchair should pay attention to each other. If you're going to leave a door-opening spot, are we planning for a 1976 two-door Eldorado that's going to take six feet? There's not many, just like the opportunities for wiping out a wheelchair.
Well, the ordinance just says adequate space.
That's right, and I think at this point, we can go with that.
So...
The basis for that federal guideline for the five feet is so that you have a situation where you have two wheelchairs that are coming from opposing directions so that they have an opportunity to be able to pass each other.
No, that's larger when two pass. That's a single wheelchair. And that is the turning radius of a wheelchair at the five-foot. If two of them were passing, it has to be light.
And two Eldorados parking and opening doors at the same time.
Lot going on.
All right. The stars align.
I was just wondering, do we have any designated handicap parking places that would give a wider berth that should not be in front of this gentleman's place? You know, I mean, it would, it would be nice if we had a couple that gave a wider clearance and that three wheelchairs could pass, five wheelchairs, whatever, in that. But, you know, if we had a handicap designated areas for loading and unloading, because some of these vans come out with, you know, a lift, they don't want to, they're not out in the street, they do that. But what I'm saying is, in this particular instance, that would not be a handicap spot.
Well, let's stay on point for this particular point now. Any other questions or concerns on this?
Well, not concerned, just to comment again, we are trying to come up with a reasonable solution that will be beneficial to the residents and businesses of Marine City. And right now, we have a chance to vote on that.
Well, let's do that. Please, let's, we're not going to beat this any longer. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Luffley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Number 18-2018, Rules of St. Clair County Drain Commission.
Want to take this one?
This one's one of yours.
Five of our stormwater permits, we have to have a plan placed for our stormwater. They will accept St. Clair County's plan that they have. If you have a chance to look at it, it's like 34 pages. But we need, we need this passed to get our permit for the stormwater. And the only thing that is just adoption of it, the DQ is telling us either we make up our own or adopt theirs.
Okay, just paperwork then.
Just paperwork.
Any questions on this? Roll call vote, please.
We have a motion?
Oh, that's right, we need a motion, that's right.
I'll make a motion to adopt, under Resolution 18, 2018, adoption of the rules of the St. Clair County Drain Commission.
Support.
Okay, roll call vote now.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Luffley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Ordinance 2018-005, Water and Sewer Rate Introduction.
The ordinance is just reflective of the rates for water and sewer based upon the costs, and this is something in conjunction with the budget that we do on an annual basis. There's a minimal increase, water usage from $6.94 to $7.09, and sewer usage is from $5.50 to $5.62.
Approve the ordinance. Or is this a first reading, or is...
Yes.
Prove the introduction.
Introduction. Can I get a motion there to introduction?
I make a motion that we introduce Ordinance 2018-005 for the water and sewer rate.
Motion in support. We have any questions on it?
We, I believe, we are required to maintain a positive balance or certainly no less than zero. So, this is an unfortunate formality that we have to do as prices go up on things.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Luffley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on to property line disputes.
In the nearly three years that I've been here with the city, there have been some outstanding property line disputes, questions of ownership, where property lines are, issues with alleys that previous management and commissions have been working with owners to try and resolve. And working with the attorney now, we have been discussing this at great length to try and find some way to be able to clear up some of these old outstanding issues. What I'm looking for at this point is permission from city commission to work with the attorney on finding a way to address some of these outstanding property issues. The costs that potentially would be involved in this are working with a survey company and potentially doing a title search on some properties to determine ownership. There seems to be some confusion about ownership of some property, and county records don't reflect our practices, so these are some of the things that we're trying to clear up, and just looking for permission to move forward with the attorney on this.
Mr. Avery.
I agree, that should be done. I just have a question on the word approximate lot line locations. We're talking about having it surveyed. Now, I don't think it'll be against the national meter standard that's held away, but what we're going to say, this is the new city-recognized lot lines.
Correct, so there will be a new survey, new property descriptions done, and it will all be official, it'll be filed with the county deeds, so it'll be an official record, there'll be no question in the future for any future commissions or city managers as to ownership and property lines. Taking a look at the county website, property lines, I know that they're not the be-all, end-all. They are just an approximation, they're a guideline for someone that is looking at property or trying to establish property lines to use as a guideline. It's a starting place. Anyone that purchases property should know their property lines, and when you're looking to purchase something, get a survey done to ensure you know exactly what you're purchasing and where fence lines and things like that are. So, that's just what we're trying to do, is clean those up, and then we'll be able to provide that data to the county so that they can better approximate those lines on their system as well.
Do we have that motion for discussion? Or what do you...
A motion would be helpful.
Make a motion that we, the attorney, look into the property line disputes and go from there.
Support.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes.
So, your motion, would that include...
So, your motion would that include paying for surveys?
No, uh, I'm in several municipalities. And when, when we get property line disputes in the four units I work in, uh, we tell them, the city and the township does not get involved in the property line disputes. You hire a surveyor and he will give it. And if your neighbor doesn't like your survey, he'll have to hire another. And it's between the, the property owners, not the city.
Well, these are all properties that are owned by the city, though. So, we do have some responsibilities. Initially, we won't be sending money for surveys. We'll be taking a look at the property and trying to figure out, in essence, how we're gonna move forward with resolving some of these issues.
I just want to be clear, Mr. Clausen's motion that to have the city attorney look into this, what does look into it mean?
In essence, working on figuring out how we're gonna move forward with resolving these issues.
So, direction to start doing something?
Yes.
We, we have a pretty good idea of where these disputes lie.
Okay.
And we, along the way, would want to resolve lingering disputes, um, but they do involve our properties and they are impacting other property owners.
So, these are city-owned properties that are buttoned up against personal property?
Correct.
Correct. And those, you know, the irregularities can lead to the wrongful placement of structures and fences and, you know. I agree that generally, if it's just two property owners, we don't get involved. We let the civil system take. But these are our property lines. We're only gonna work on the ones that involve our property lines. Yeah.
Our properties, cause I know we-
That's a big difference.
We have some alleys in town when I was here that started maybe at 20 feet. And by the time they get to Parker, there are nothing but a pencil.
Yeah.
So, if we go the next step and conduct surveys and a homeowner already has a survey that they may have had when they bought the house, like I do, um, how does our survey trump theirs? I mean, you're gonna end up, you're gonna end up still arguing over the property line.
The surveys, in essence, should be the same, but like I said, we, we won't be taking the first step of the survey.
Okay.
It, it will be a process that I'll be working with the attorney to figure out how best to move forward. Um, I imagine that there'll probably be some communication to City Commission next. Whether that be open or closed session, I'm not certain at this point.
Okay.
There would be, um, potentially letters to property owners that we want to clear up this dispute.
Well, in a situation like that, we might work with that property owner to reach, to reach a property. If there were competing surveys. Um, we're, we're gonna try to go about this to resolve and settle these disputes, cause there are some disputes.
Longstanding ones.
Right.
Some of them too. I know we've had alley disputes. We had one when I first got on here, um, where the person had submitted all the paperwork, paid for all the, to vacate the alley. The city took it all and never filed it. So, I agree. You want to make sure that all these are covered. We have so many alleys with little pieces. Some of them were done, some of them weren't done, some of them aren't done, you know.
Many are not recorded.
Correct. And so, it's a big issue. That one turned into a big issue that had to be resolved here. So, we want to avoid that.
So, one of the advantages, I think I'm hearing, is to record it with the county then, that it's not officially recorded.
In some instances.
Okay.
Yes. And we want them all to be recorded.
Gotcha.
You think a lot of problems, right, including now with the real estates and the banks? Cause they don't require a survey anymore. You used to get a survey with your packet when you closed on your house. And now, if you want a survey, you pay for yourself. And so, we're getting a lot of problems. It's not just here. It's, um, it's all over.
Right.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor anymore? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Luffley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the next item, the shooting incident.
As, as I'm sure you're all aware from previous conversations, there was the domestic shooting incident that we had in Marine City back in March. Um, I have spent a lot of time working with the attorney and talking with the police chief and investigating, I can't really say investigating, researching and following through with some of the issues regarding it. Um, I, I had numerous conversations with the police chief about how the situation was handled and his performance on that. Um, I can't comment on anything directly with the police chief. Uh, that is a HR matter. However, I do have a couple of things that we are gonna be moving forward with. First and foremost is further developing a policy when dealing with the media, um, particularly as it relates to Facebook and contacting the, the news companies and, and everyone regarding that. Um, and then also working with an independent third party to further review our general orders for the police department to see if there are any gaps that potentially could be improved upon to help satisfy, um, the process and procedure to see if there's any, any improvement that we can make in those. I have been in contact with our insurance agent quite extensively and also a company that, back in 2014, helped with the general orders and updating those. Um, it sounds like there probably are some things that they can do to help with the review of our ordinances. And, and Steve Saft with our insurance agent, uh, is gonna be able to help us through with that process as well. So, that, that's where I am with that. That's, uh, our next steps that we'll be looking at regarding that.
How long do you think that could take?
Unfortunately, I don't really have an answer. I've had preliminary conversations with them. Uh, the general orders are about 600 pages. If we had a thorough review, it could take six months to a year.
I know, um, this came, these procedures came up, um, when Mr. Tillery was here. And, one asked to review, there was a big hoo-ha over that. Um, and then we never did get the correct book. We got a three-year-old book to review, um, never did see the updated one. And I'm hoping that we finally get all this resolved so that it gets here. I do know that certain ones are, but I also know that in large cities, they post their procedures all online. I've looked at some of the larger cities.
And I, I did speak with the company about that. And he said that that is not a good practice at all because, in essence, you're giving everyone the playbook. So, if you say, "We do not pursue anyone that steals a car," they know that, great, that's a town that can steal a car and get away. So, tactical things like that, they do not recommend sharing that information.
And I understand some of that stuff, but some of the smaller things, you know, so that people understand what their rights are too. And that, that we don't just say, "Well, you can't do it, our process says," and then they're not allowed to see it. Because some of that can be requested.
Yeah, actually, when, when I was talking to him, there are some ways that they can handle that. There, in essence, your process and procedures. So, you may share your process, but not your procedures.
Yes. I'm a little unclear on what, what your intent is. I mean, I would assume at this point, we have process and procedure for everything. It sounds like you want to enhance the communication portion of it based on social media or news media? I'm not, I'm not clear what your intent is.
Putting together a policy for how to handle situations. So, like commonly, most-
Well, stop right there. Handle situations, our department has procedures to handle this.
Communication, I'm sorry. Communicating.
Okay, follow-up, follow-up communication.
Press contacts.
Follow-up communication is what you're talking about.
When do we have press contacts? Who initiates them? How do we? We have a, we have some, there are some orders in place.
Right.
They're just, they need some more detail.
Yep, yeah.
Let's be real. Um, in this particular case, it was on Facebook an hour after it happened, right?
Yep.
And you would probably not even communicate for another day or two. So, what, what do you hope to gain here, I guess, is my question, by changing your procedure on communication? Follow-up communication?
Well, one of the things is, is that you want to be very cautious about what information you share when you have an open case so that you don't-
So, what, what is said by the city or the police department?
Will be used against us.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause the whole thing was spelled on Facebook an hour after it happened.
Right.
At least that side of the story was.
And you can't believe everything you read.
I don't even go on Facebook. I believe what my wife tells me.
Yeah.
Well, there's, somebody's getting a free dinner.
Yeah. I just want to be clear on what, what steps you're hoping to take here. So, you want to, you want to kind of outline the communication, the follow-up communication?
The community, we want to outline the communication that we initiate. Obviously, we can't control what gets on Facebook.
Sure.
But we want to initiate when during investigation, our, our representatives will affirmatively speak and call out the press to give details.
So, if Channel 2 News showed up and stuck a microphone in Chief Heslop's face and said, "Tell us what happened."
He might say, "I'm not gonna comment. It's a pending investigation."
Okay.
And we want to have some procedures as to when you continue to say that. For example, "We're here, we're raising this issue tonight because the prosecution process is now over. The sentencing is now over. And now, we're going to do things."
Yeah.
Because we didn't want to interrupt that process or impact that process in any way.
Okay. I just want to be clear on what, what your intent is.
Good question.
I was just making point, you know, it's sort of like handling classified information in the Department of Defense. If a newspaper prints something that may be the true subject that's classified, or it may not be, it is still the person in the government's responsibility to not deny or confirm. You just, it's under rumor control, I guess, for this. And the more this Facebook-type stuff gets out there, there's gonna, there's gonna be that. And there's nobody to check it.
We can only policy and process what we do.
That's right.
Any more comments on this? Moving on, moving on to traffic control order for Water Street, no U-turns.
So, one day, City Manager Levin and I, we were, we got talking. And she had explained that one day she saw a large bus tried doing a U-turn right there at Washington and South Water Street. And with the influx of pedestrian traffic and vehicles that are down on South Water Street, um, plus you add into a, a delivery semi or something down there, I think U-turns are now becoming a dangerous situation. What we need to kind of curtail and, and stop. So, I presented the, um, traffic control order to the city manager, which is before you tonight.
Yes, Susan.
Um, years ago, we had them. But I think with all those streetscape, every time they did the streetscape, they kept taking them down and getting rid of them. And they were there years and years ago. And I'm sure the old order probably got lost somewhere and-
I have three large books of traffic control orders. I'm trying to combine into one book. And I, I haven't been able to find an old version.
There was one at one time. I asked somebody and they said, "Yeah, there was one." But like I said, we've had so many changes down there that I think they got removed. And then they just, they get put back up. But I've seen it a few times right by Anita's.
Yeah.
Where they've pulled those and it's getting really, really, in fact, they're even going down the one-way streets the wrong way.
I've seen that a couple times.
Yeah. And I think it's cause we have a lot of people from out of town and then they don't, you know, they're not sure of stuff, so.
Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we adopt Traffic Enforcement Order Number P dash 18 dash 004.
Support.
Any questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to recreational equipment ordinance.
So, with recreational equipment ordinance, I think maybe there was some confusion on the part of some people. Um, after the meeting about what, what we're doing moving forward, what had been approved at the last meeting, we were still carrying through with the permit process for recreational equipment. And after speaking with the, the building officials, she was wondering if that's something that might be considered to just allow it based upon the criteria that we had come up with so that we don't actually have to go through the permitting process for it. Um, that potentially opens it up to quite a few more people because it's something that would not come before the City Commission for consideration. Uh, there was also something that had been brought to my attention that the ordinance that we passed, and I believe also the previous ordinance, never allowed for any parking of recreational equipment on the street at all. So, people that either don't have a driveway, have an alley, something like that, they would not be able to pull up to their house via the street and load, unload. Um, these were just a couple issues I wanted to bring before you for further discussion and consideration regarding this ordinance.
I know the biggest thing I see is that, um, now usually what was always allowed was that if the trailer was still connected to a vehicle and they pulled up in front of the house, it was not a problem. It's when they disconnect them and then leave them there for a month. And then they're sitting there. In fact, I just saw another one where there's a boat trailer. And I believe the house sold, so it's probably somebody new and is not aware of our ordinance. But they're leaving empty boat trailers and just stuff out in the middle of the street. So-
There are also people that in essence are using the street as a storage yard. They have a truck and a car. They'll leave the truck with the camper on the street and just leave it.
So, are you gonna make it that they have to be connected or disconnected? Or is there a 72-hour period? Or is there gonna be, what are you gonna do? I mean, if we allow in the driveway and say you've got 72 hours to load and unload, is, you're gonna do the same thing for the street?
That would be up to you guys to determine if that was something allowable or not.
Mr. Avery.
I think something like that is necessary. And we have many small lots in the city. It is impossible to meet the ordinance as accepted, to try and park in a driveway even for a short period. And we have to remember that in addition to trailers, we still do have Class A, B, and C motorhomes. So, there's nothing to connect or so on. But I don't know if you need a meter made to go around, but you certainly want to make sure that it isn't something that is static. It has to be used for loading and unloading a reasonable length of time. The 72 hours is good.
And that comes down to an issue of enforcement. You know, how, how does our code enforcer enforce 72 hours? The, the way that that would be done is, in essence, a neighbor, someone calling and saying, "Hey, it's been there for a week."
Yeah.
So, that's something that is also going to be, I think, an ongoing issue.
Are you gonna cover more than just those? Is this gonna cover boat trailers and boats and-
It's all recreational.
All recreational.
Okay.
The one thing I forgot to add is that a person can park in front of their house for this loading or unloading where it's legal to park on a street. There are some, of course.
Like Main Street? Yeah.
That unfortunately, you can't put something there. So, that exemption still has to be in effect.
I don't have a problem with doing it. We put the limit on there. I know it's gonna be hard to enforce, but at least at one point, if she lets them know and then they have, then they go from 72 hours from there, I suppose, whatever, um, once she's notified them. But as long as they're not there for a month. Cause I mean, we've had some cases where they just leave them.
And that, in essence, will be something that either through Susan driving around town and, and making note of herself, or finding out from, from residents policing, helping police the situation for us.
Would you want to keep it so they have to remain connected to the vehicle?
I mean, if you're gonna give them the 72 hours in the driveway and they're not, I mean-
Then it's too long, right? Okay.
Yeah. I guess I wouldn't have a problem with that as long as we put a limit on it so that they're not there for eternity.
I could see you get in a situation where you start loading and you realize you forgot something and you want to unhook it, drive up to the store, get more stuff and come back.
A lot of people store them. And they'll, they'll bring them to the house. They'll clean them up. They'll-
Load them up.
Load them up, get them ready for a trip or something.
Yeah.
Restricting it to being tied to a vehicle doesn't make sense, so, yeah.
So, do you want to go- So do you want to go with time duration?
It seems the most logical.
Whatever we have that's in the driveway, I would use the same thing. I think it's 48 or 72 or something.
72.
I would just use the same thing as what's in the driveway.
Anyone else have any?
To allow the front area, the front street, side street.
But if there's no parking in their side of the street, then, like you said...
Obviously, no parking is no parking period. I don't know if maybe Susan wants to speak on this. She'd be the one that would be enforcing this ordinance.
As for parking in the streets, it would be kind of difficult to monitor. I mean, I can do my best based on complaints and that type of thing. You know, it's whatever you guys think is the most reasonable. There is such a thing as living within your boundaries. If a property doesn't have adequate space to store a camper, maybe they should have it at a storage yard, you know, that type of thing. There's a lot of communities that don't allow them at all in the driveway. They have to be behind the front line of the house, which is the original ordinance, is how that was written. And if you don't have room for it, then you have to make other arrangements. That's just how other communities do it.
Are you comfortable with the 72 hours? So if somebody keeps it in storage, brings it home, cleans it up, loads it, getting ready for a trip, that 72-hour period allows them to do that?
It would be difficult to enforce.
Yeah, but you're most likely going to react to a complaint from a neighbor. You're not going to drive around town and try to figure out how long these things have been parked.
Well, I'd have to make notes and put it in the computer as to when I noticed it. I mean, like you said, there are several now that are in the street.
It's manageable.
I've not noticed this.
Just recognize the fact that we're not going to be able to tag these in exactly 72 hours, say you need to get rid of it. There's going to be wiggle room there, so don't be calling us on day three, saying, you know, "Why isn't it gone?" Well, you know, "I didn't know about it. I haven't got a complaint. I haven't driven past it, seen it, made a note yet."
Then there'll also be time for the letter to get there, and so it could go on for some time. Yeah. So, I mean, it could feasibly be 10 days or more.
Your form letter right now, does it stipulate a certain time, like five days, 10 days?
Most of the things we give 10.
10 days.
I do a separate one and say immediately, but our mail isn't the speediest sometimes.
Right.
It's kind of like the grass ordinance that we have eight inches, and by the time they get the thing in the mail, it's...
Twelve inches.
Yeah.
And then as for the permits, we already have people lining up wanting to submit and come before the commission to get their special approval. That could feasibly end up being the same as we had before. They all want the special permission to park them in the driveway.
Yeah, if you recall, what kind of precipitated this is that we had three people that had come in and wanted to have a special permit to be able to park it in the front yard portion of their driveway, and that was when we put, in essence, a moratorium on them so that we could further develop the ordinance.
And that was for the summer. Most of them wanted just for the summer, or...
The original one was permanent.
Yeah, I know that one.
Do those require a City Commission approval?
As this new ordinance stands, yes, it would have to come to City Commission. So you could be looking at 100 people.
That's my concern.
And one of the things Susan would like to see...
That's what happened last time. You got a flood of them, and we put a moratorium on it.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the things that we did develop was some guidelines and parameters for being able to allow those in the front yard area of the driveway, including the setback from the corner, mine site issues. And I think what Susan would like to see is that, in essence, we adopt those guidelines. We still have the limitation that it can only be between, I think it's April to October, that they would be able to park it there.
So you adopt the guidelines, and then it's an administrative approval as opposed to a clogging up your valuable City Commission time?
So do you have those already?
No, we'd have to change it.
We would have to redraft this ordinance.
If you direct, you can make all these changes at once.
And then it would come back for first and second reading. So the two things, in essence, that we will be potentially looking at is removing the requirement for the special permit and adding the ability to be able to park in the street for loading and unloading, not to exceed 72 hours.
But I think in our ordinance, for zoning Board of Appeals, it says any person, corporation, person that has to change something in the ordinance that we have an ordinance, they have to go through the ZVA, because we have to do hearings, we have to do stuff. So otherwise, if you just do the permit, then how much money are we spending in time with our staff if they go through the ZVA?
This is a general ordinance, not a zoning ordinance, so it's not subject to ZVA. That's why it comes to City Commission instead of ZVA, because it's a general ordinance versus code.
I don't think the city should be given any, the board should be given any approval. I think that should go to the ZVA.
No, ZVA doesn't handle these type of disputes. I sit on it. I've been on that board for five years.
It's a parking ordinance.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
I believe that it's legally set up that way, is that commission is the authority for the code, I'm sorry, the...
The non-zoning ordinance.
Non-zoning ordinance.
Right. Well, under this change, they would not be. That's the point.
There's also fees for mailing and such that would be, unless we enact a fee for them to apply.
And that would be the next agenda item.
Do you need a motion, or just board direction?
Just board direction at this point, and we can come back with a redrafted first reading with these two changes.
Yeah.
If we can get a motion to support moving forward with those two changes?
Yes, I... Make a motion to support the two changes, 72 hours and what was the other one?
Guidelines.
The guidelines.
Right. Adopting the guidelines. Support.
Motion and support. Anyone else? Uh, what do we want to do on this one?
All in favor.
All in favor.
All right.
Aye.
Closed. Carried. Moving on to... So that got both of them done then, right?
No, no. So the next one would be a portion dealing with the fee schedule for recreational equipment. Susan, if you want to step in here for this one as well, when we were originally looking at this, we were talking about amending the fee schedule to include a fee for permits for the recreational equipment of $40. With those changes, is that something that we would still require?
If we don't have the permits to, or the applications coming in to go in front of City Commission, I don't see any reason to have any fees if it's just something that's allowable. It's either allowable or it's not allowable. There's really no reason to enact a fee.
How about, do you have to spend time verifying that they've complied with the requirements?
I think it would be regular code enforcement that it's 10 feet back from the sidewalk.
Be standard, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are they going to have to do this every year?
No, it would be a permanent thing.
Okay. So this one-time fee?
No, no, there'd be no fee. That's what she's saying. If, with these changes enacted, there in essence would be no fee. If, say, you chose to keep this as is, they have to come to City Commission and do a permit, this fee would cover that. But with the changes that we've talked about, you don't see that there's anything that we would need to have any type of fees in the office for, correct?
There wouldn't be anything applied for, no notices sent out to neighbors, nothing like that.
So you're just asking to adjust the fee schedule?
Yep, but now we have no need, so we can move on.
See, we did have it taken care of.
I just wanted to clarify it.
All right. Thank you. All right, next, we're moving on to board appointments for election commission.
You need someone from the City Commission to do that. It's not going to be on the ballot. To volunteer to serve for the public accuracy test and...
I've done it before, unless...
Somebody's making a motion.
Well, you've got to be in the committee.
We need a motion to volunteering?
Well, I was on it before, and unless somebody else wants to do it, it's fine with me. I mean, it's, you know, it's not a big deal. It takes you two seconds before a meeting.
Mr. Turner.
I make the motion since President Gennett is anxious to do this, we allow it.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried.
Thank you for volunteering.
Moving on to board appointments. First one's a planning commission. We have one vacancy, and per my notes, I have to appoint, make a motion, I'm going to make a motion for Joe Moran to stay in his position in planning commission.
Second that motion.
Any questions or concerns on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried. Then we've got two... Do we have to do these separately?
Probably should.
Okay. Tifa is mine, too. First one, I'd like to nominate Robert Weisenbaugh.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried. Second vacancy on Tifa would be Bob Leupley. I would like to nominate Bob Leupley.
I would second that motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Aye.
Carried. Moving on to the fire authority, we have two vacancies, both re-upping. First one is Steve McConnell for a four-year term. Steve McConnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried. Second would be Mark Posey for a one-year term.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carried. Moving on to the library board, we have two vacancies and two applications, so first one's Jill Shield.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Carried. And then Frederick Babcheck for the other library board.
Support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried. And then for the board of review, it's one alternate vacancy, Trent Andabury. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried. Thank you for everybody that's complying. It's nice to have everything filled. Next, we're moving on to financial business disbursements, including payroll for $128,422.39.
I make a motion that we disperse $128,422,039 for the payroll this month.
Support.
Questions or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leupley?
Yes.
City managers' report.
Recently, I have attended the infrastructure committee meetings, ZVA, and also a State of the Lake meeting yesterday down in Macomb County. I've been working with Paul Dingeman regarding sound equipment for our space here. We're getting much closer to having something that hopefully will be before the board at the next meeting for approval. There could potentially be some language for some proposed charter amendments at the next meeting as well. The Mary Street project has pretty much been completed. There's still a piece of sidewalk left to do and some seating, and they'll be done with that. I have been working with Mike on the seawall on the south side of the bridge, trying to make some improvements there. We were working with the neighboring property owner to try and get some grant money for transient marina. We're doing a little temporary fix to try and get our 100 feet of seawall at least usable by people. We have someone that has volunteered to donate some cleats and wood to put in there so that more boats will be able to use some of our seawall on the Bell River. So that will be the 100 foot south of the bridge, and then we also own, I think it's about 50 feet or so on the north side of the bridge that can accommodate smaller boats that can get under the bridge. So I'm hoping within a couple of weeks, we will have that ready and available for people to dock yet. And that's all I got.
Any questions to the city manager?
Are we starting the sidewalk soon? I've seen some requests.
Yes.
We begin June 15.
Okay. How about the Safe Routes to School thing?
It's due on February 1st of July.
Okay. How about the beach parking project?
We're still waiting on word from the grant. I would anticipate sometime mid-June, we should have an answer whether we got the grant or not.
Okay. And the two trees at the beach, are both those for Carol?
No, just one.
Just one, okay. So her tree is in there?
Her tree's there.
Okay. Here's one I wanted to bring up to you. I know it's really bad this year, the maple seeds and the drains. I know I cleaned up all along my corner, but they're seriously horrible this year, so I hope...
I'm trying to get out there.
I know, and if people can do it on their own and clean up in front of their house some of those things, please do it, because it really plugs those drains up when we get a lot of rain, and they're terrible this year. And are we, have we got any more information from the Maritime Festival lately on what's going on?
Not recently. Mike apparently does.
You guys mean with them, the shirts that you're...
Okay, because usually they bring us more stuff, and we just haven't seen anything this year, so...
That's what the media store.
Okay.
They're trying to put together everything they can and before they come to you.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Mr. Avery.
Do we have any news on the ferry? Progress?
I have no update. I don't know if you have anything, Dave, you've been...
As of last night, through a source from the delegates, that they're looking at about three more months. But at least the drawings are completed, the engineering is done. And there was a concern on how that was getting done, and now that they've gotten past that hurdle, so hopefully, things have turned in for permits, which I have no clue yet, because during the in-opening, the permits have not been filed yet, so...
Okay, well, we get questions.
Yep, and that's why I went to John Stewart yesterday about it.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else for the city manager? There's nothing. How about Mr. Avery, why don't you start us up today?
I would like to give commendation to Mike Ittrich for his management of the Mary Street Progress Project. When my dogs and I go by to inspect a thing, Mike is generally there, and it worked very well with, I think, minimal interference with the operation of Washington Life Center. That was handled very nicely. Also, in thinking about the date yesterday for the D-Day invasion of Europe, we lost a citizen in town who participated in that endeavor. Gordon Love. It's, there'll be fewer and fewer people that were able to share our gratitude for that event, a very terrible thing that had to be done. So, thank you.
I would like to welcome our new commissioner, Wendy Callahan, and thank her for volunteering to share her gifts and time. And if you want to talk with her, she's the owner of the Lazy Llama, so free plug there, a great place. I've been glad to be a customer there a few times, so stop by and talk with her. Also, Happy Father's Day to all the men who actually matured and helped guide other people rather than just getting old.
Yeah, at this time, I just want to thank everybody for your support after...
After I, I guess you'd call it volunteered, and then was appointed to this position, people have stopped by and congratulated me and thanked me for taking this on, but I want to thank my fellow commissioners for your support along this, and, you know, even for the doubters that were out there, I promise I won't let you down. You know, I'm not perfect, but I'm going to do my darndest to make sure I don't let you down. It's going to work at the will of our, of our community, and just do what I can to make the best decisions possible, so thank you all very much.
Thanks, sir.
The only thing I want to say is, hey, summer's coming, and the kids are going to be out of school, so watch out for them, darting out and running around, and please stay off your phones and pay attention, we don't need any accidents here, but please watch out for all the little kids, they're all, they're all getting ready for that summer vacation, and you know they'll be out in force.
I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Callahan, welcome aboard, look forward to working with you. Thanks. That's it.
Yeah, ditto. But it's just nice to see some new people getting into it and see how, you know, get some new ideas, maybe something that we've overlooked for the last couple of years, or longer, so... Also, I'd like to thank Jesse White for the Memorial Day Parade. I mean, it went off very well, it was way too hot, and way too hot for full Class A uniforms. Next time, we'll see Chief Hesse up in a jacket, right? But also, Denny Daniels for taking care of the monuments, and Beth and George Sevison for planting the flowers up there. It did look very nice, and I'd like to thank the community for coming out, because we have a small community, but we had a lot of people there, and it was hot, and they still stood there for the full ceremony, and we only had one person go down this year, and wasn't one of the ones with the gun, so we were good. On that note, thank you, everybody, for coming out, it was really nice. It's a great cause, and we need to show respect for that. Can I get a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?